Well, lead us with the pledge.
Let's bow here in prayer. Gracious Father, we come again thanking you for this day. Thank you for another opportunity, Lord, to come before you for this city as we transact the business of this city. We thank you for your blessings and we pray, Lord, that you be part of this meeting that erects our minds and our hearts to do what is right for the citizens of this city. We ask that blessings upon our mayor and all the council members and all those who partake in the governance of this city. We thank you and we pray that what we do will be pleasing. It is in Christ's name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Councilor Broughton.
Present.
Councilor Erickson.
Here.
Councilor Jenkins.
Councilor Moore.
Present.
Councilor O'Malley.
Councilor Ball.
Here. Tomorrow, the chairman will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for an administrative conference, November 13 meeting. Anyone with awards, recognition of guests and communication, any council members?
Well, now, I just see some constituents here that I know are here to listen to the discussion about the application for the liquor store on Kings Highway later in the meeting, so I just want to acknowledge their presence and when we get to that, if we have any questions, I'm sure they'll be, you know, happy to respond and I don't know, there may be other people from the applicant side as well, but we just wanted to acknowledge that I saw some folks.
Okay. Anyone else? Mayor Tyler?
No, thank you, not today.
Reports, Mr. Green? Anyone got anything, Mr. Green? Saying no, Mr. Green? Thank you. Mr. Crawford? You have any revenue collection, collection plan?
We don't, Mr. Vice Chair, we've got, those will be at the next meeting, first meetings of the month.
Okay. And Mr. Swinney? Finance Department, tomorrow, no public hearing today, add legislation to the agenda. Any public comment?
I don't believe we had anything to add to the agenda.
Any confirmation, Department?
Not that we're aware of, Mr. Vice Chair.
Consent agenda legislation, none under for introduction, Mr. Crawford, right?
We are, we're under consent agenda legislation, nothing for introduction to adopt ordinances and resolution. Resolution 192, accepting dedication of Arlene Lane Right-of-Way in Broad Acres, South Subdivision, Unit Number One.
Mr. Chairman? Okay, please, specifically, what did that, what did that say, mean?
That is at Flu and Al, Patrick, if you want to come up, it's at Buncombe Road and Flu and Al Lucas where they intersect. There should be a copy on the last page of your document, councilman, that shows you the exact area.
For Arlene, it's at the end of Broad Acres, where Broad Acres runs south and Broad Acres makes a 90-degree turn and turns to the east. Arlene runs to the west. That's right there.
And why are we dedicating?
There, there's already a dedication there, it's narrow. The, the property owner along Arlene is looking to, or he is subdividing the property into lots, and they want to dedicate enough right-of-way to the city in case the area is developed so a road can be built.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford, please proceed.
Yes, sir, we're under regular agenda legislation, Mr. Vice Chair, resolutions on second reading and final passage are which require only one reading. Resolution 189, ordering and calling a special election to be held in the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana for the purposes of submitting to the qualified voters of the city propositions to authorize the continuation levy and collection of special ad valorem taxes therein and to also authorize the city to collect, to levy and collect a special ad valorem tax for the continuation and maintenance of a police three platoon system originally authorized by Article 14, Section 12 of the Louisiana Constitution of 1921, making application to the state bond commission in connection therewith and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Resolution 190 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Shreveport and Carr Rigs and Ingram LLC for the purposes of an external audit of the city for fiscal year January the 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. Resolution 193, approving the request of the City Court of the City of Shreveport to impose a $5 judicial building fund fee to maintain and support an electronic case management and file system. And Resolution 194, giving preliminary approval for the issuance of not exceeding $50 million of general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana for the purposes of refunding all or a portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bond series 2011, making application to the state bond commission.
Resolution 189 is postponed until December 27th.
That's what I was going to say. 279. And, let's see, on 194, do we have a presentation or kind of any additional information about that?
We can pull pictures of that up on the website.
We have bond counsel, the financial advisor, and also our underwriter here. That'd be great, I appreciate it, it's just one of those, you know, you read it on paper, says what it says, but having some additional context would be helpful.
Sure. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This legislation is a result of the proposed tax reform bill that you probably heard about in the news with the federal government. The proposed tax reform bill will eliminate the ability for local governments to do an advance refunding. In order for the city to move forward with the possibility of taking advantage of advanced refunding now, we would have to submit an application to the state bond commission, which we, we completed already, but we would need to also pass a preliminary resolution from the council to allow the state bond commission to hear our matter on the agenda. We also have on the agenda a resolution of how professionals to review, which we have underwriters here, and also Pam to determine whether or not the advance refund is an advantage of the city. Preliminary numbers reflect that it is, and the purpose, the primary purpose is, the new law that is proposed before the government is retroactive. So, if it passes, if we don't do an advance refunding by December 31st, we'll lose that ability to do so. And the preliminary numbers show that the city will save about $2.5, $3 million if we do the advance refunding.
So, what additional action is necessary after this proposal before us in order to complete, you know, say this, this is in our advantage and it is something that, you know, we decide to move forward on beyond the municipal bonds review? Is there additional action that the council needs to take in consideration and if so, you know, what's the timeframe on that?
Okay. First, we have the preliminary resolution which allows us to go before the state bond commission. We have the high-end resolution, but also we have later in the agenda the introduction of the ordinance. So, this will be the first reading.
Okay, that's okay. So, it's on there now for a two-reader? Got it.
Right. So, we return, I think, December 12th for the final approval where we have, you know, all the other questions that you may have, but in order to get this train moving and to be before the state bond commission, we need to submit this application now.
It is, it is a lapsed timeline, but it, again, as bond counsel said, it allows us to issue in anticipation of the 31st of December.
Got it. Thank you, that helps me understand the timeline better.
And we have two more pieces of legislation.
That are on this current agenda.
There are, there are two companions on there.
Yes.
Councilor Dink?
I was just going to say, obviously, and I missed the beginning part of it, so apologize, but it's allowing, hold on there. Since every municipality in America is looking at this at the moment, did we discuss this already?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Well, we didn't discuss every municipality.
The impact on the market.
I mean, yes, well, essentially, you, you know, there's a high likelihood, if a lot of other people think like we do, that there will be a lot of people in the market trying to do the same thing, thereby eroding the value. So, I mean, you can't, it's like a, you know, supply and demand deal, and there's only so many people that could be buying at the same time. Now, that's a lot, I'm sure Pam's got an answer on this in terms of how the market would respond, but I can't imagine it's going to be an ideal scenario, but I'd love to hear it.
The one thing I did want to point out, I'm sorry, Pam Mobley, city's financial advisor, is that the state saw fit to move up their meeting in December in order to meet all the applications and requests that are coming through. That's how many people in the state of Louisiana there are trying to do it. On the other hand, I think that, I don't necessarily want to say I have a crystal ball and give you rates, but what I would like to say is there are a lot of paper that is available. December is the highest month usually for redemptions to come in, which means better for you because there's more paper available to buy your, your new bonds that come out. So, again, I don't want to try to give you a crystal ball and say rates are going to be great and it's going to be the best, you know, deal we've ever had, but I do think the demand is there and because of the fact, it's kind of like a two-edged sword, because so many people are trying to take advantage of it, it makes it more competition, if you will, to drive down rates. And then, again, with December being a better month for redemptions coming in, there's more paper available to buy your bonds.
Got you. But there's definitely an idea we get there that everybody's trying to sell at the same time and there aren't enough people to buy it, I mean, that is, I mean...
It could happen, yes.
Or at a rate that we like.
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
No, I mean, then you just have to make sure.
I have a question about 189.
Okay.
And this is to administration.
Yep.
Resolution, Resolution 189, do we know what else may be on the ballot?
We're looking into that right now to see what the commission's going to do.
Yeah, if we have any info tomorrow, that'd be great, or just like to know.
Mayor's already directed us to inquire about that, so we're looking into it.
Thanks. Councilman Broughton?
Yeah, my inquiry, we go to 193. I'm, I'm looking at the legislation, the resolution, am I clear?
Yes.
Where's the $5 fee going to be levied? Because you sponsored 193.
You were at the meeting?
Well, I'm trying to...
You made a mistake before that point, remember that was the budget meeting day.
Okay, I mean, I, you weren't in the meeting that day?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with how this came about, can you explain it? I mean...
Oh, I'll send you the email, I'll send, you were on the email, remember court? City court came, sent us an email, the mayor sent something, then we had a meeting, you weren't at the first budget meeting?
How was it, he's supposed to be, I left at one budget meeting.
Then what part of the email did?
It's... It's essentially a fee that's paid now that's going to retire soon, but they need it in order to, they need to replace that fee with this fee in order to update all of their electronic record-keeping and, and computer systems because they're lagging behind. It's slowing down court pockets and things like that, and they just want to be able to have updated.
And their current system no longer has a vendor that supports it.
Yes, if it crashes.
There's no backup.
I appreciate that, councilman.
The city court is authorized by state law to have a $10 fee. They are proposing that they would have a $5 fee on both the criminals, defendants, and also on the civil, people who are in civil court. Now, the criminal defendants, one of the fees that they have for $5, they're going to do away with, so this will not be an increase for anybody who's charged with a crime. But for the people who are in, in the civil side of the court, they will have to pay $5, and it will go toward the maintenance of the system that they are going to buy. They're going to use funds on hand, they say, to purchase the equipment, and this will be to maintain it year after year.
And the other benefit that our member was discussed is that for the civil filings, the, you know, people who make a high volume of civil filings who would end up paying more of this fee, also get some additional functionality and some better benefit to them, so it is actually an update that would, you know, be worth it to the frequent users of the system as well, so it'll make it a lot easier for them, so maybe a fee that they're paying, but in many senses it may save them money from having to go down there in person as often, that kind of thing. So, there was some, there were some good arguments for it.
Well, and I appreciate, I appreciate you, Mr. Clerk, as well as Councilman Erickson, but I didn't ask the question arbitrarily, I, I, you know, oftentimes we get backlog with items of personal interest and, and family issues, and I haven't had a chance to review it to the detail that I would have liked, so the question was a really relevant question, because I didn't want to see a, an extra fee levied on any, anyone coming through, through city court, and this would not be an increase in any levering of fees, because I'm sensitive to the fact that 90% of those that come through city court are poor and black, and I would not want to have seen him to be burdened with additional, additional fees, so, and I will review it overnight to...
And for sake of clarity with respect to, to your concerns, I think it is, I think this, it's accurate to say that it's not an increase for criminals, but it is an increase for citizens. So, the civil filings, which would be like convictions or...
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm...
Those kind of things, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
It can, it can read a little confusingly, but yeah, it's a, it's a status quo for, in terms of cost of criminal files, an increase per citizen.
Again, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk.
You go forward, the email, Tom, stay there, please. Thanks. Mr. Crawford, will you proceed, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair, we're under introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to December the 12th, 2017. Resolution 195 authorizes an interim application process for wireless communications facilities and support infrastructure for the city's public right-of-way and/or the city-owned public property, authorizing the mayor and her designee to implement said process. Resolution 196 authorizes the mayor to execute an accept of active donation between the City of Shreveport and A.B. Glenn Properties LLC herein, hereafter called Owner, enacting herein through Robert Aiello for the Southern Loop Common Sanitary Sewer Main and related apparatuses. 190, Resolution 197 authorizes the mayor to execute an accepted donation between the City of Shreveport and Lanyap Landing LLC herein, after called Owner, enacting herein through Kenneth G. Lawler and its member manager for the private sanitary sewer and water main extensions and related facilities to serve Lake Shore Harbor Estates. Resolution 198, employing professionals with respect to the proposal issuance of not exceeding $50 million of general obligation refunding bonds of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana for the purposes of refunding all or a portion of the city's outstanding general obligation bond series 2011. Resolution 199, authorizing the execution of a retainer agreement with Napoli, I knew I was going to slaughter this, Skolnick, P-L-L-C, and Kenneth M. Carter, A-P-L-C. Resolution 200 stating the City of Shreveport's endorsement of Brentwood Acquisition, Shreveport, Inc., to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. This is a tax abatement of $11.2 million project investment in the historical district that they reside in.
Councilor Corbin?
That was solid.
Mr. Vice Chairman, there are some questions posed on Resolution 195, that's the telecommunications facilities resolution. The city attorney's office is requesting a little more additional time, and we'll also have the consultant who is working with us on these agreements, as well as the telecommunication companies themselves, to offer some more additional input on it, but I ask that it be postponed to the next meeting.
Next thing.
And certainly I'll pass along, I did hear from, and I'm sure others of us have heard from representatives of the telecommunications companies, some with questions that, you know, are obviously, you know, why they would have them, but some were, were things I wouldn't have, have known, so I'll certainly pass that along for what benefit that may be to the discussion.
And then, so are we postponing and are we withdrawing? I mean, it's all...
We can introduce.
Well, it's whatever the pleasure of the council is, I just know that we will need at least additional time to bring the consultant down to discuss some of the questions that were asked of us.
It can be adopted tomorrow.
Do you anticipate, like, I'd like to withdraw it, so if that's... Or just not introduce yet, if we anticipate there could be some edits to...
Right, there will, there will likely be edits.
Well, then, should we just wait to introduce until we've got some of the feedback back from them?
That's fine. So, just a motion to remove from the agenda tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay. And then put it back on there later.
Whenever, whenever it's...
Okay.
But, the owners, I say, is there a lot of people that are very interested in this?
Okay.
And I'm, I want to just kind of manage their expectation that they don't think we're actually voting on this.
Okay, sounds good.
So, what are we doing?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, the council can make a motion to remove it from the agenda.
Or, or we may just, we, or we could just not make, not make a motion about it, and then it could be, we could take it up at a later meeting.
96, 97, 98, 99, 200. Or it could just die.
We could just skip it when we introduce others, and that, that way we don't, it's not tabled, and we haven't taken any action on it yet, basically.
Can you skip it? I don't know if you can just...
I, we would prefer that you just remove it from the agenda tomorrow, there'll be a record of it, and it won't, it look like we overlooked it or something like that.
Okay, great, yes. You got to remove it.
And then, can, I have another question on, so there's an, this part I didn't understand, so there's a consultant involved?
Correct.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, can I speak that in?
It's your turn, sir.
So, this consultant, have we already read on some arrangement with the consultant?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we passed that in legislation?
No, sir, it's professional services. The, the consultant is national, is a national consultant that handles the negotiations of these type of telecommunications franchise agreements. We have also our engaged counsel Julie LaFargue as well, helping to manage this relationship, and they provide a level of expertise in these type of negotiations that is unique and that the city has not had to engage in these small cell negotiations in the past. We felt that we'd be best, given the timeframe and the amount and volume that we're seeing as far as telecommunications franchise fee agreements that are coming to our office, that it's, it's best that we engage some experts who's subject matter expert, experts in this field.
Okay, but if it's a professional services agreement, don't we have to approve it?
No.
Not professional services.
Under, at any, under 10, is there no cap on that or anything?
There, it, it, well, now, it's not an engineering agreement, it's not an architectural agreement, so those are not, subject to any of those, I think, what you're thinking about, the A and E caps. It's not a bid, it is a specific professional service authorized, and I can, I'll pull the legislation.
Well, no, no, because it's for like attorneys, though, we have to agree, right?
Right, right.
So, I guess it doesn't fall into the attorney category?
Correct.
It doesn't fall under the A and E?
It's just a subject matter expert.
It's just a consultant that would be hired under the budget line of professional services.
Financial services.
Are any funds going to be expended for that?
No, the funds are actually paid through the agreements, not through the city.
Well, that, that's a problem, okay, well, that, I know that.
Yeah, that's, it's aligned in the actual legislation itself that shows what they're, it's a drawdown from an amount that's put into an escrow account.
Copy.
By the telecommunications company.
Got you, I got it, okay. You got it.
Any more discussion?
On, just on Resolution 200, I would say, you know, Brentwood has done really an excellent job at both providing the services they provided their facility and at reaching out to the city and coordinating with the neighborhood, with other stakeholders in the area on this expansion that they're doing. I'm really, I'm really, you know, pleased to say that they have been very inclusive in their, in their efforts to do this and they're expanding and adding jobs, and certainly we'd ask you to favorably consider that when it comes up, but it will be not up for a public, it's just introduction, it won't be even a public hearing until the next time, but just wanted to mention that they have really been, been good to work with in terms of considering the area around them.
And, Mr. Vice Chairman, one last thing, while we have in here, we do have representatives from Napoli here, they travel from out of town, so if you have any questions today, they are here, if not, we can move on.
Councilor Dink?
I don't have any questions. We got, we got a good bit of information on that, we can clarify it for me?
All right. Mr. Crawford, would you proceed with introduction?
Yes, sir, introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to December the 12th, 2017. Ordinance 142 amends Chapter 102 vehicles for hire, Article 3A operating regulations, Section 102-88 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to transportation network companies. This will change the 25 cent per ride fee to a 1% gross revenue and also remove the trade dress provision that IDs each vehicle as a T and C provider. Ordinance 143 amends the 2017 budget for the general fund, this is for the internal audit fund, it takes $17,500 for materials and supplies and adds it to contractual services. Ordinance 144 amends the 2017 community development special revenue fund. These next three that I'm going to read are in compliance with the internal audit and the state auditing requirements, where if a special revenue fund is, is more than 5% from its adopted budget toward the end of the year, we make that correction now at that time, and so the next three will be part of that provision. So, in 144, we amend community developments, we decrease total appropriations by $3 million, that's just a decrease in grant funding that usually is available to them, and they take that off on the expense side as well. 145 amends the downtown entertainment development district, this is decreasing that appropriation by $115,000, decreasing revenue by $25,000 for land rent, and decreasing total sales tax for the Tiff District by $90,000, and then taking $100,000 out of the reserve account to, to balance that with $15,000 coming from other charges on the other side. 146 amends the 2017 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund, we do decrease revenues here by $150,000, and we do take that off on the other side on expenses through personal services, materials and supplies, contractual services, and other charges. 147 amends the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, general fund budget, this is for IT, it takes $250,000 from personnel services and moves it to equipment. According to IT, there's a significant amount of IT equipment that they can purchase now at a considerable savings over waiting until next year, based on that, the mayor gave the go-ahead to go ahead and move those funds if the council so approves. Ordinance 148 provides for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $50 million of general obligation refund bonds, series 2011 of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form of fixed and details and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for the replacement of such bonds, and the application for the proceeds thereof to the refunding of the city's general obligation bond series 2011. Ordinance 149 amends and reenacts certain provisions of Chapter 10, Chapter 62, and Chapter 78 of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to allowing open containers and public outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages in designated downtown areas, which include sidewalk cafes or bistros adjacent to certain premises, and to allow open containers and outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages citywide, to include on city property when a lawful local city temporary special event alcohol permit is obtained, and to allow for the application to apply for a local temporary special event alcohol permit in any area within the City of Shreveport. And ordinance 150 repeals Section 10-84 of Chapter 10, Article 2, Division 4, relative to the requirements of physical separation from other business operations of sale of beverages of high alcohol, high alcohol content for consumption off premises.
And I'll just mention that I did have some questions on, you know, ordinance 149 and 150 are part of the continuing review of Chapter 10 where we're trying to modernize it if it was state code. 150, I did still maybe have a few questions about how it pertains relative to the unified development codes and changes that we've made, so there may be some additional review on that. 149 is one that takes a couple of things that we've talked about in the past and kind of puts it into one ordinance, and so, one of the things that we've had on the table for a long time is sort of how to handle sidewalk cafes, and so we've got some clarity on really the, the best way to handle that, and that's included in here. But another thing that's important is, you know, a lot of times we get those requests, people get their special event permit, but if their event is outdoors, they still have to come to us for a Chapter 10 waiver... but if their event is outdoors, they still have to come to us for a chapter ten waiver for the outside part of it, you know, because it both says that you can't have alcohol on these, in these particular sites unless you have a special event permit and that it can't be outdoors. So there's an application for them to get the special event permit, but we always have to approve the ability to let it be outdoors if that's the case. This would make that a factor in the special event permit application. And then as long as they meet the other qualifications of, of what's approved, then we don't have to do that second piece of, the second sort of bureaucratic layer. So that's something that I know we had talked about, but they're kind of combined into one. So take a, read over that. I think Karen did a great job of addressing several concerns that council members have had and sort of streamlining the process, making it make more sense and be more clear. But because of the fact that the discussions have sometimes been separate, I want to make sure everybody has a good chance to take a look at that and make sure you understand what all that covers.
Councilman Zink.
Yes, so I'm, this is really a question for the CAO or Charles. With regard to the downtown development district entertainment. So do you know off the top of your head, or can somebody send it to me, an email? I see the land rent rents decreased by twenty-five thousand. I'd like to know kind of what percent of what we expected, same with the sales taxes, like a ten percent decrease or something or?
We, we estimated zero on the land rent for the end of the year. So instead of the twenty-five thousand, we estimated zero there. And so we won't have to adjust the fund balance there. The difference in what we assessed on the, the taxes, one sixty was actually budgeted. We estimate ninety-seven five coming in, so you're looking at about sixty-two thousand five hundred, which is what we estimated coming in on the backside.
So.
If, if you look at, if you look at the two thousand seventeen budget was just a little over a million dollars. The estimates for the overall budget for year-end are eight hundred and forty-five thousand, that's a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar difference. So we're actually projecting even less than we're having to take off here. So we, we're not going to have to make a additional budget to offset, and that's the same thing with riverfront too. We've actually got more coming out than we have to take out for the five percent. So we've made those adjustments already in the estimates for the fund balances for both of those accounts.
Just didn't want us to double over again two times in a row and end up with a hundred and eighty-five.
Absolutely.
That's why, okay, thanks.
Sure.
All right. Mr. Crawford, would you proceed with the ordinance on second read and final passages?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair. Ordinance is on second reading and final passages. Ordinance one thirty-eight amends the two thousand seventeen capital improvements budget. This is for Sportran, fifty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars coming from the FTA for restroom, community police offices and the bus break room at the Southwest Transfer Hub. Ordinance one thirty-nine amends sections in chapter fourteen, animals and fowl of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, code of ordinances relative to implementation of a trap neuter return program. Ordinance one forty is a zoning case number C dash one oh three dash seventeen. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of Saint Vincent and Oakley Drive, Shreveport, Cat-O-Parish, Louisiana, from R one seven, single-family residential district to C one, neighborhood commercial district. An ordinance one forty-one is zoning case C dash one oh four dash seventeen, amending the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code for rezoning property located on the west side of Lynnwood Avenue, two hundred and forty feet south of McCary Street, Shreveport, Cat-O-Parish, Louisiana, from C three, general commercial district to C four, heavy commercial district.
Any discussion? Councilman Zink, I mean, Everson?
On the, on these ordinances, I'll just say if anybody has any questions about one thirty-nine, you know, certainly happy to address those. Otherwise, I think it's very clear, it's in compliance with other cities that have very similar laws in Louisiana. And then one forty is one that I think we've discussed in the past. It is one that's at Oakley and Saint Vincent and it was one of those that came on the agenda at the same time as some of the MPC initiated changes, but it's not and it's, it wasn't with that same pack of requests. It was actually its own request because it's a new business looking to open there. So if there was any confusion from that, feel free to reach out and clarify.
Okay. Councilman Zink.
I did not request to speak.
I thought you mentioned that you wanted to ask about the trap and neuter for horses. Say, no.
They're trapping horses?
No. Just kidding, I, I go more under my breath that I somehow get very involved in these animal ordinances.
We were just talking about that this morning.
And I, I don't really, because I'm pointed the ones that don't have a pet and how I end up in these fields.
You're being representative of your constituents.
Right, right. I don't own a horse either.
Sorry, I'm just checking. Mr. Thompson, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
The city attorney's office recommends that ordinance number one eighteen be removed tomorrow. It concerns the liquor.
It's kind of being absorbed into the other ordinance, is that one?
If it's not a solid district.
One eighteen of fifteen, yes. We're, it's going to be, what are we going to remove it from the table and then remove it from the agenda?
From the agenda, yes, remove it. Motion to remove it from the agenda, I think would be sufficient.
Yes, so, and can I do those in, does he, I can do that in one motion? Or is it two? If I can do it in one, I'll do that.
The other thing.
All he's referring to right now is on the, sorry, they, I think we were kind of several sidebars. The, what we were talking about is on the table, there's an, a motion from two thousand fifteen that was regarding the sidewalk cafes. And since we have a new ordinance that addresses that, we're just talking about getting rid of the old one from the table agenda. So that's, there was another ordinance on the agenda that's the same number, but it's of seventeen. So that one was of two thousand fifteen. So that one's been out there on the table for a while, that's the one we're referring to.
Mr. Thompson, would they, would they bring it back to the agenda and then vote it down, one eighteen?
We, I.
I'm sorry.
We can do one motion where we'll remove it from the table and remove it from the agenda. So we'll just get rid of it.
Okay.
Because of the charter provisions, if there are no objections, the budget ordinances will be removed from the agenda in place on the regular agenda for the next meeting. Not tomorrow, but for the next meeting.
He's just reminding them that the budget ordinances will come off next meeting.
Right.
They have to, we'll be arrested. I said they'll have to, we'll all be arrested, it's the law. Call a special meeting?
All of these, okay.
Mr. Vice Chairs, we, we do not have any property standard appeals at this meeting.
Okay, no ABO appeals, I'm sorry.
We do have some metropolitan.
We have zoning appeal.
I do have a request from Mark on these. Is there a package?
Good, it's not.
I don't have a link and I didn't have a link all weekend out. Fortunately, I'm fairly well-versed on this issue, but for everybody else, I think it'd be who of us to have a package or a linked package.
It should be in there, I'm sure it was linked in, I don't know if it's just not accessible.
Anyway, but that's, I mean.
Sure.
Unless somebody else is seeing one, but I have to read that.
No, it's not.
There must be a broken link then.
That's it.
You said we do have a zoning appeal?
We have two.
Yeah, well, it's this tomorrow, but it's the, it's.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, but it's the same location, there's just a group to speak for and a group to speak against.
Actually, they're each appealing two different issues.
Yeah, one is, one is a.
It's the same case.
It's the same case, but two different issues.
And we have, we will submit to you some amendments that you may or may not want to, I mean, some motions that you may or may not want to make concerning it. But would be examples of the kinds of motions that you.
I'm waiting for that with eager anticipation. I can see somebody smiling behind you, Sid, and guess who's a crafter.
For the sake of clarity, since this is, at least with the alcohol portion of the appeal, sort of a new process of the way that it's working under the UDC. What is the vote required, one way or the other, to, you know, when we, when we were working on the UDC stuff, we had to pay a little bit more attention about what votes were required for passage. What is the case on this? Is it simple majority or is it?
This will be a simple majority.
Just wanted to make sure there wasn't some other.
Simple majority of presence in the chambers.
Correct.
Okay.
As long as you have a court.
So it goes without saying.
That's a good point.
So it's normal operating procedures, not, not the other one.
And even though both sides appeal, I think one motion will be sufficient to, to decide both questions.
Even though one is on, I mean, it's two different things. If one is on the alcohol, the other one's on the entrance and exit property.
Well.
The site plan, I mean, sorry.
I thought that the people who were opposed were opposed to the special exception use of whatever it's called now. So if you, if you vote with them, then I think the whole issue is.
Then it's fairly moot, yes.
Yes. And if you don't vote with them, then you would decide the other question in a motion.
So given that, should they be ordered, well, I guess it doesn't matter, but on the agenda, the applicant's appeal is listed first, which is the one about the site plan or the turning radius or whatever. And the, and the appeal.
I thought we had put those into one case because they have one case number.
It's listed by the same case number, but they're listed under number one and number two.
I know, I'm saying, I thought I had corrected that.
Oh. Well, it's also not linked, so maybe somebody forgot to hit refresh on whatever y'all may have done.
I'm not saying it isn't, it's certainly remediable before tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sweeney, can you, can you give me an additional clarity to what, what's happening with this?
Yes, sir, I sure can. This is the first time you've seen a special use permit. This is a new animal in the UDC. If you go to the matrix, if, if there is a particular type of use, you'll look down on the chart, it'll have a P for permitted or an S for special use permit. What that means in this situation, you have a C two zone property. The gentleman wants to put in a store or have a store that sells liquor. Under the matrix of the UDC, it says if you're going to sell liquor in a, in a C two zone property, you have to get a special use permit or an SUP. But why is that different? Under an SUP, it goes to the MPC and the MPC board, under the provisions of the UDC, has control of the site plan as well as granting the use. And they can put additional stipulations or changes to that site plan contingent on this particular case in order to protect the neighborhood or to improve safety or whatever else they see or deem necessary to make certain this is a, a compatible use with the neighborhood and the commercial district. So normally you don't get to see site plans, but in this situation you do because under the UDC, the MPC board actually is supposed to make the final decision on special use permits unless somebody appeals it. In this case, both the applicant and the neighborhood appealed the case. So you as city council, because it is an appeal, get an opportunity to review the conditions that the MPC board placed on them through the site plan and whether or not you agree with that or if you don't even agree with the fact that it should be allowed as a liquor sales in this location. So you have that option tomorrow to make that decision.
So the MPC board was consistent in some previous cases.
This was their first special use permit to.
And this, and this is as well.
Right. And so what they felt was that this, the, if you look at it and if you allow going, because it always could allow for beer and wine sales. They were always there even when Circle K was located there previously. But what they did is they looked at the new Circle K and they looked at the new oil change shop that was across the street and what had been done in those two locations. And they realized that, that the driveways had been pulled further away based on recommendations from the city engineering department because you're supposed to space your driveways as far away from the intersection as possible. They also realized that by doing that, they would give greater protection to the neighborhood to force more of the traffic onto King's Highway as opposed to Gilbert Drive. They also asked that they, the applicant provide landscaping and can, and a sidewalk along that section there to improve that section and the appearance of the site. They also requested the applicant limit his hours of operation, which he is willing to do already. He said he was, he would close down at twelve midnight on the days that he's open. And so he's willing to do that, they put that as a stipulation as part of this approval. Likewise, they wanted them to improve the fencing, in other words, he didn't have, replace all the fencing, but there were some areas that needed to be repaired because it's right next door to a residence as it is right now. So all of those are the stipulations that the MPC board placed upon them as their condition for approval. It was a difficult case because it is a liquor store, but there's not another liquor store in that entire zone. So you have to go a long distance before you come to another place or establishment that will sell you the high alcohol, a high alcoholic content beverages. And again, this is packaged, in other words, you can't drink it on premise, you have to buy it and then go somewhere else to your home or wherever to consume that product.
In regards to the discussion at the MPC meeting, did opposing people make, make any comments regarding the opposition?
There was opposition, there was also, of course, the applicant was here and he had a few people that did speak in his behalf. There was also the opposition, the neighborhood, they submitted to you a rather lengthy neighborhood petition that has over, I think, a hundred and fifty names on it. And now, a lot of those folks weren't at that meeting, but that doesn't necessarily mean they won't show up tomorrow. They expressed their concern that they did not want to see a liquor store down the street from their homes. And that was their greatest concern and felt like there was nothing that could be done to mitigate that, even though the MPC board tried to do that with the changes they made in their site plan. But in so doing, neither the neighborhood nor the applicant were happy with the outcome of what the MPC came up with.
And that was the package of stipulations? And with that, the MPC board voted?
Six to three to allow for the liquor store, but with changes to the applicant's site plan, removing one of the driveways and extending the landscaping and the irrigation system to improve the appearance of the site and to make it more compatible with the adjacent neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. And as I mentioned earlier, Councilman Crawford, there, there are at least a couple of members from the neighborhood around there that I, that I know are in the audience, I don't know if the applicant is here, but yeah, do y'all want to, do y'all want to come up, John and Ed?
But Mark, before you sit down, you're looking at the site plan, is Public Works or Traffic Engineering brought in to give their, their comments about where driveways are?
Yes, sir, and I, this is not necessarily a requirement that the driveway has to be moved away, but the city engineering department, and I certainly don't want to speak on behalf of them because Patrick can speak on their behalf, but they do have certain guidelines that they follow. And they follow those guidelines when they redevelop the site for the Circle K as well as for the oil lube change place next door. So we thought being consistent with that policy and we did communicate with their, with their traffic engineer to talk about this, they concur that this would be an improvement to the site if that driveway was closed.
And Mark, if, just based on, I know, I know, we just invited them up and I thought of another question, but this.
I wanted to make a stand-up for a while.
This particular site, it seems somewhat shallow for a commercial site, like it's, it's sort of shallower than a lot of other commercial sites even in the area. Is that a visual misperception of mine or is that?
No, I, I think you're right. One of the things we did learn is the applicant, not the person who's putting the liquor store in, but the person who owns this property. but the person who owns this property also owns the property adjacent to it, further to the... Uh, to the east.
Okay.
So we know they have a much larger site, that, you know... What would be... What would be a perfect world, if they could come back in and maybe redevelop this site along with what they could build on the adjacent vacant property, and create something that might actually be more compatible than even what we have now? But what we're dealing with is basically what we're given, which is an existing structure. They're not adding on to the building, but it's backed up pretty darned close to the neighborhood, to say the least. I mean, it's literally, there's a seven-foot fence, and there's the house.
And then a house, yeah.
Yeah. It's tight, and you're...
It's a narrow... It's a very narrow one.
It is. Your observations are very correct. Now, if they wanted to open up another store that just sold beer and wine, they could do that tomorrow without even having to get approval from us.
Thank you.
And where would the sidewalk... Sidewalk you're speaking about, where would the sidewalk be on the...
The sidewalk would be in the front, in the very front, along, uh, King's Drive... Uh, King's Highway.
And would it extend to the... All the way to the resident... You're talking about against the...
We're talking about going down King's Drive toward...
And if you go across that vacant lot next...
It wouldn't go across it. It would stop there until they develop the next lot.
Got it. I just, when you mentioned they were owned by the same person, I didn't realize they were owned by the same person. I thought...
They are, yeah. Even though the applicant is... Is a different person, but the... The ownership of the two properties is under the same person's name.
Got it.
All right. I got it now. Okay.
Just from a procedural point, is this a tag team event, or is it one in sequential?
You each get three minutes, but we'll certainly...
Three minutes, sorry.
Extend or modify that.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
But you asked by convention, it is three minutes per speaker.
All right. Thank you.
For the record, will you state your name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Edward Crawford. And Mayor Tyler, good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
And all of you, appreciate your listening to us today. Uh, we represent the neighborhood, the Gladstone neighborhood. Uh, we've also had friends from the Highland area, uh, cement letters. And the basic issue we have is the one that's been laid out already, which is that the standards for this kind of exception require... It's based on what we understand, that there'd be no danger to public safety, or welfare, or health, and that the, uh, use be compatible with, uh, property in the... In the area adjacent to and close by. So it's kind of two areas. Um, one of the things we're concerned about on the health side and safety is you've got a liquor store right on the corner with a tremendous amount of traffic coming and going. Uh, you have a house with kids and people right behind. I mean, the entire block is residential, except for that one site. And the idea of having that kind of store with just liquor in it, or one that includes liquor, hard liquor, uh, strikes me as a bad use for our neighborhood. The Highland area has made it clear to us that there are a lot of group homes, rehab facilities, and halfway houses in the area, uh, that they're using to... For people with different dependencies, and having a liquor store that close... Again, this is a change from the general area. There's beer and wine around it. But the addition of the liquor store, um, to me, ups the... Ups the ante, in terms of danger and risk to public health. Uh, the... Is that we understand that there will be no investment in the property, other than maybe shelving for liquor. There's no, uh... There are no other items being sold, as we understand, except for liquor, beer and wine, and hard liquor. And so that's, again, it's not a, uh, broad services being offered, but a very narrow one, and one that by itself, we find objectionable. Um, I hope you can understand that. Uh, the property in the area, um, is actually holding up pretty well, the property values and the standards. I'll let John speak in just a moment, when my three minutes is up. But several of us have been working hard to rehabilitate the area, to add properties, to upgrade properties, to provide... To take some rental properties and turn them into a single family, which is the best thing for stabilizing neighborhoods. And so we've put a good bit of effort and time into it, and a good bit of money, over many years. Uh, John can elaborate in what he's been doing in his family. But we all live there. We're trying to improve our neighborhood and keep the property value stable. As I tell you, some of my friends, we're not heading south. We're staying put. Uh, but we want to have your support in keeping the neighborhood as strong as we can. So that's... That's our gist. Uh, we'll bring plenty of people tomorrow, and we can repeat some of this as well at that time. Is that inside of three minutes, more or less?
My name's John B. Atkins III, and, uh, 235 King's Highway. Uh, to preface things, I own, uh, the seven buildings to the east of Mr. Caston's three vacant lots. That's 303 King's Highway to, uh, 321 King's Highway. Uh, and, uh, in the past, it's been brought up that that's... This neighborhood's turning into mainly, or not... Or mostly commercial. That's not the fact whatsoever. I've got, let me see, one, four... Twenty... Twenty-one, uh, units in the immediate, uh, vicinity on King's Highway. Actually, twenty-two. Also own, uh, three duplexes to the immediate rear of the Circle K, and, uh, own the, uh, the four duplexes to the immediate rear of the Brothers Hair Design on King's Highway. So I made a vested, uh, investment in the neighborhood, and we've, uh, improved all those properties, and I'm continuing to improve them. And this, uh... Kind of runs against the gamut of that, uh, more commercialization. And, uh, not really fit for... For what we're receiving the neighborhood to... What we're trying to move the neighborhood towards. I guess that's about it. Unless you have any questions?
Yeah, I do. I mean, the fact that, uh... There will not be on-site, no on-site consumption. The building would be nice, nice, uh... I guess, cosmetic room building. That's... That doesn't have an impact on your... On your...
What, uh...
Position as the... As a deterrent to acquire the neighborhood?
It does not have an impact on my opinion. I live in the neighborhood. I've worked in the neighborhood. I see the goings-on. And the foot traffic from Highland is fairly heavy. And the foot traffic will increase significantly, I believe. Uh, well, I don't believe, I know, uh, when the liquor store's put in place. Because the other liquor stores in the neighborhood... There's one on, uh, Centenary Boulevard. There's one over on, uh, further part of King's Highway, by LSC Medical Center. And I see the go... The, uh, traffic to and from those places as a destination where people usually aren't using vehicles. So... And there's a good deal of homeless in the neighborhood, and, uh... Unfortunately, most of the homeless people have some sort of substance abuse problem. In addition, one thing y'all brought up in the past is that you don't want to have buildings vacant. Uh, last week, I put a semi-solicited offer in for the Circle K and the adjacent lots. Uh, I haven't heard back from the owner or his agent yet, but, uh... I'm willing to buy it and take it off the market, and put it to somebody else's use. I'm not going to, uh... I'm gonna put my money where my mouth is, basically. Uh, it's not gonna be vacant if I can do anything about it.
Did you make this approach to the owner prior to this, uh... This landlord?
I did not make the... I made the approach to the owner at the point in time I got, uh... Notice from the MPC. The day I got notice from the MPC, I made an approach to the owner. Now, after the MPC meeting, when they decided to put their appeal, his agent contacted me, and I talked to my partners for a week or so, week and a half or so, about that, and then put in the offer. I did not make a... An offer to the owner or his agent before the point in time of the MPC, a notification, because it was told to me by the owner's agent and by the sign on the side of the road that they planned on putting a strip center there, building a branded strip center, which I thought would be wonderful. But evidently, well, I know from a fact in my book that the market doesn't support that right now. And that's probably what they found out, uh, themselves. But, uh... That's... That's the whole gist of this.
No, I mean, unfortunately, on this one, um... It... Just as a point of clarity, I think you had mentioned, um, that it would be an aesthetic improvement, but as I understand it, they're not really proposing to do any changes. It's just gonna be a Circle K that's not a Circle K anymore. And there's several abandoned Circle Ks in the nearby area with, you know, new Circle Ks across the street. And they're not really gonna change the facade any, so, I mean, it's just, uh... It used to be a Circle K, now it's a liquor store, you know?
Well, you know, I... And I, you know, I mean, I'm for neighborhood integrity and maintaining, uh, standard. But sometime, our fears does not come realized. I mean, we was faced with the same... A similar case last year, uh, with, uh... With the Hearn Street proposal. It was adjacent to a church and, uh, some, uh, brother... Brother... And a miss, uh, residential, as well as, uh, Masonic Hall across the street. And they came, and they expressed some of the same sentiments that you're expressing. But a year and a half later, uh... It doesn't appear that those fears was, uh... Was realized. And I'm reflecting on... Cuban, is that Cuban on... On Erie, which is almost like on the other side of this...
Cuban's on, uh, Piermont.
Piermont. Piermont. It's sitting sort of what in a... In a position of residential. Are you... Are you getting any feedback as... As relates to how that's... How this have an impact on the community, on the neighborhood?
Uh... I've heard, uh, myself, nothing against Cuban, um, but it is not directly next door to the residential, per se. There's a bit of a buffer zone. Uh, I think there's a couple of houses that are further up the street, but there's definitely, I'd say, a tenth of a mile between Cuban and the... And the first house. I mean, this one is gonna back directly against the house. And also, uh, I didn't know if I was planning on speaking today, but I have pictures of Lake Shore Drive number one. Uh, he said that he wasn't gonna allow any loitering, and yet, we do have loitering outside. And he said...
Where is that now?
At Lake Shore Drive number one, his other liquor store.
Oh, on Hearn and Lake Shore?
Yes, sir. He said he wasn't gonna allow, uh, loitering outside. I have pictures of loitering outside. He also said he wasn't gonna allow... He wasn't gonna have any Sunday liquor sales, and they are having Sunday liquor sales. Now, this is what I was told from my business partner and my wife. And so I just was gonna show this for reference.
Well, I mean, that... That store is actually on the boundaries of my district in Councilman... Owens District, and, uh, I... I frequent that area about every day, and I don't see the loitering that you're proposing. There's a Family Dollar store.
Right.
That's directly adjacent, and I see a lot of... Lot of foot traffic coming in out of there, but... And I would certainly look at those and see... But I think tomorrow would be to tell them on that way, but... Did you make your, uh, comments and observations and concerns known to the MPC... At the MPC meeting?
I was out of town.
You was out of town?
My business partner and my wife are there.
Let me scrub. Did you...
No, I was not. I was unavailable for that meeting as well.
But we're all of the same mind. I mean, we've been contacting... We've talked the whole time. Just not every person can make every meeting, therefore, we send representatives.
And again, I mean, my only references in asking that question was that, uh... They put more effort and time into investigating scenarios on... On their projects and on their... On their, um, cases, uh... And then they share those, that information with us, but as a... In the process of appealing. But they have more resources to put into the investigative board to see, uh... And ascertain what's... What they feel is in the interest, and being consistent with the law. And, uh, Mr. Sweeney mentioned, said that in... And, uh, everything that was presented to the... To the MPC board, and with stipulations, they approved it six to three. And, um... And I'm just saying, with the information that they... They was presenting, it appeared that, uh... That they considered all... All the presentation that was afforded them. But we're interested, you know, we're open. I'm open enough to get more information, and you say others gonna come and speak tomorrow. But at the same time, uh... To override, and be seen some instances, I think, with, you know, in our part, somewhat, uh... Challenging, especially when we want to be consistent with what we try to do here in the city. I'm finished, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Can you pass those pictures to the...
I can.
I just wanted to add to your comment, Mr. Bradford, that the, uh... The entire block upon which the old Circle K and the proposed liquor store is located is residential. I mean, the entire block. The only commercial element is... Is that one.
With that.
Uh-huh. And we're talking about houses right behind and right next to the property on both sides. And as John didn't elaborate, but he has acquired and put significant investment into improving, almost except for the corner house on Centenary and King's, which is an old... Old house. He has acquired all the property, one piece at a time, all the way down to where the current Circle K, or former Circle K is located, and has put significant investment, and they're all full of tenants. Good... Good quality people, and so they're gonna be faced with having a liquor store right next door. And so they're, you know, that's gonna make it harder to rent those spaces. That's kind of one of the side effects of this. It's not just a direct impact, there's indirect as well. And people wanting to buy a house right behind a liquor store, in my opinion, would be less likely to do so. So it just simply weakens, uh, the area in that regard. So we respectfully disagree with the MPC's decision. If that's a... Maybe a direct way to approach it.
But their information was as obtained in a way where they could not deny a, uh... An owner.
Right.
The right to, uh, release his... His business, his... His structure. And they could not allow, I think it would have been... It would have been somewhat wrong for them to, uh... To say to a potential business that you cannot locate here, uh, when... When the zoning and the... And the other aspects of the, uh... Of the law says that they could.
Right. We understand that, and...
And that's the challenge is that...
And we're not experts in zoning. We're just... We do... We are pretty good at knowing what affects neighborhoods. And I think sometimes the MPC and other government agencies may not capture that whole... The whole side effect part, the unintended consequences. And that's kind of what John is speaking to, after twenty-something years of, you know, acquiring, improving, and renting properties, all for residential purpose. And to be clear, we're not opposed to... To an appropriate commercial application either. We would love to see a nice strip center there, but again, it's a... It's a difficult environment to... To do that in, and if they were gonna make great improvements to the property and sell other things, we would be very supportive of a... Of a balanced approach. But this is purely a liquor store. And I... Our impression is, it's gonna have some racks in there, and a lot of liquor in there, and very little else. And that's gonna be right in the middle of where, like I said, every property on that street, except for that corner house on Centenary, has been acquired in the last, what, five, six, seven years?
Six years.
Six years, and significantly improved. Drive by and look at it. They're very nice-looking apartments. And the houses behind, we've bought several of those and renovated them, and put them back out to rent at a... At a better price point, in a... In a very attractive situation. So, uh... And putting our money where our mouth is, I've done a little bit. John's done a lot. So we're trying really hard to do that.
And I appreciate it. I think the city would appreciate you. We need development. We need expanded, uh, housing opportunities, uh, you know?
Well, we're trying to keep people in the... In the... In the center city, because we think it's a wonderful place.